Thank you. Oh, he's got a speaker back there. Alright, I will call this meeting of the Durham Board of Selectmen to order on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members present tonight, we have at least one amendment to the agenda. Item four is coming off because John is not able to join us tonight after all. Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay. Move on to public comments. Come on up. State your name and your street and then.
Yeah, Joe Roy, Pinkham Brook Road. Just coming to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission to thank Kevin for coming to our hearing, our little meeting last week. It's always nice to see people and see people from different organizations in town and we just wanted to say thank you for coming. We felt like it was a good first discussion and that you being there added good value to help answer questions and stuff like that. So we just wanted to formally say thanks.
And I would say right back at you to the Conservation Commission, you guys have obviously put a lot of work into this and and it's a very complicated situation and it's a tough one to break down and do kind of its components that everybody can kind of digest and I think you guys have made some good progress doing that.
I think we had a lot of good questions too and some more questions for future, but.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we keep the conversation going. That's great. Thanks. I appreciate that. Okay, I don't see anybody else here for public comments. Alright. Do we have the name of the first original deed? Can I see that? So in our last meeting, we, on the agenda was consideration of a quitclaim deed. But we realized we didn't have a notary present for the signing, so and there was a mistake on the date, I think, or something on there. So we fixed that. We've already had the discussion about the deed itself and so at this point I would entertain a motion to execute the quitclaim deed for looking for a book, for the property. Doesn't give a lot. Oh, for tax map. Zero zero five, zero five six, zero one five and book ten, one oh three six two, page two thirty-eight and on book one oh seven two nine, page one seventy-four. And also book one one, one five two, page two oh one of the Anderson County Registry of Deeds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Josh moves. Is there a second?
No seconds.
Two seconds. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, we have unanimous. I'm gonna pass that back to you to. Okay, and we have one other quitclaim deed, but we don't have a notary here tonight. Well, she left and so we'll have to get that one at the next meeting. Abatements. So if we're going to do abatements, entertain a motion to go into assessors session. Rich moves. Joe seconds. All in favor? Okay, put on your assessor's hat. So I think, is it just the one or do we have more than one?
Just the one.
Okay, so Donna Hayes, our assessor's agent, please be advised that an abatement should be granted to the Riley Family Trust for a homestead exemption that I removed from their account in error. This property was transferred from Dana and Emily Riley to the trust and I removed their exemption. I now have a legal opinion that this is a family trust and they are still entitled to their exemption. I've attached the necessary paperwork for your signatures. Any questions, please let me know. Does anybody have any questions on that one? Seemed pretty straightforward enough to everybody.
I didn't really have any questions. I just didn't know if they had to reapply once they transferred it over because it's a separate entity once they switch it over to a trust. It's not owned by an individual.
Well, I mean, she claims, she says she's got a, she's consulted with, she has a legal opinion that this is kosher, so I'm.
She's been at it for a long time, I'm assuming.
No, I was just kidding. Her legal opinion was their opinion, I would have thought, right?
I don't think it's her legal opinion. She says she has a legal opinion, right?
The individual.
It's actually from, it's here from, there's a letter from the attorney here that documents that.
Yep, no, that's fine. That was just my only question is if it had to be resubmitted in their name.
That's a good question, though.
Okay, any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve the abatement as requested?
So moved.
Todd moves. Is there a second?
No second.
Josh seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, five zero. Let's see if you guys may start to sign that one. Okay, next on the agenda is budget season schedule discussion. So I think I'll turn this one over to you, Jerry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got the schedule that you have forwarded on to me and I just want to make sure that this, we're gonna follow this if the dates are correct. I know that our Public Information Officer has requested that some of the material that we get to her, including all of the stuff that's in the town report by March first. Right, so she can.
To her by February fifteenth.
So we can get it to the print by March first.
By March first, right, yep.
So the voters can have it by the middle of March, two weeks before town meeting.
That's the goal.
Right, that's the goal. So I just kind of wanted us to all kind of look at this, this.
This is very similar to last year's schedule. I basically just updated it with the new calendar dates, so with a few other changes and additions. My question for you, Jerry, is, so we're, we got a little behind on CIP at the first.
Yep.
Do you expect that at our next meeting, we're gonna get the rankings from CIP? Because that would be at twelve twenty-seven. That would, that would put us back on schedule.
We should. The CIP committee is meeting on the twentieth. And so I believe they'll be able to.
They had their rankings and they were sent to us a couple of days before our meeting on the twenty-seventh and
I should be able to get those too.
We get right back on schedule.
Right, that's, because we're gonna have our, my stuff is due at the end of the week and then, yes, we're gonna meet on it next week, discuss it all compiled. So yeah, it should be ready.
Okay, great.
Week after. Shouldn't be anything that holds that up.
So I guess the question, have you reviewed these dates with like staff and stuff and do these dates work?
It's pretty tight. It's gonna be close.
It is tight, no doubt about it.
It's definitely tight, so. So I'm, just so you know, I'm doing a meet and greet with the Budget Committee on next Monday to see what their expectations are and what they need for material, so they can do their work. Getting it all together by the fifth, it's gonna be a challenge, but I'm gonna do my best to get it all on a packet form. It might be a few days and of course, we'll close the book, so I'll have the twenty-two actuals, but there'll still be some invoices that are still outstanding that we'll have not met that. I just want everyone to know that, so it may not look exactly to the penny.
Right.
You know, and that sort of stuff.
That's to be expected, yeah.
Right. So yeah, I think I'm gonna do my best to meet all of these, these dates. I was just kind of looking at the date for the, to be done, middle of February.
For the report. Now, the report, that doesn't mean that the warrant needs to be finalized by then. Because we don't, the last couple of years, we've included a draft warrant with the, like actually bound into the annual report. There's no requirement to do that. If we're not ready to do that, the warrant itself, with the article, the questions, that can be a supplement to the town report and, you know, be a handout like this.
Alright.
So in fact, we'd probably save some money if we didn't try to actually print it in the book. If we can, it's not, you know, it's not a bad thing to do, but Kim can, Kimberly can give you more on that and how we handled that last year.
Because, you know, in looking at this schedule, the deadline to print is right there in March first, so we're, we're two weeks.
Two weeks to print?
Two weeks to print, two weeks, so we're, you know, so we're a little bit ahead, so we're gonna.
Yep.
I'll try to do my best to get everything on time. I just kind of wanted everyone to review and see what we're all up against. But yeah.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about the schedule?
Schedule always seems to be very fluid this time of year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, Rich. You know, we ask everybody to kind of maintain some semblance of flexibility and there's, you know, not, especially with some of the presentations, it might be that not everybody, you know, can make everything, you know, everybody's got other important stuff in their lives too, but just, you know, prioritize this as much as you can and do the best we can, so.
Okay, you know, I'm seventy-five, eighty percent through the budget, so just a matter of sitting down with you, Kevin, and kind of showing me how your spreadsheet works and getting familiar with that, plugging it all in and.
Yeah, so the spreadsheet that, you know, that you talked about, it's one I've built in years past, it's basically, and we've simplified it this year. Jerry's got a slightly different approach with some things that he wants to do with the budget and I'll let him talk about that when the time comes. But I've rebuilt the spreadsheet to accommodate that and basically that spreadsheet is for, we take what was, was being proposed in the budget or recommended by the board or the Budget Committee and you can plug those numbers in and it will calculate the estimated tax impact for you, so you know that, well, and granted, it's estimated because we never know what the actual property valuation is gonna be. We usually don't have the final school number. Sometimes we have the final county number, sometimes we don't. And then the overlay is a wild card too, so, so it's, but at least we can provide an estimate. And we've already calculated what the levy limit is for this tax year. Don't ask me what it is, I can't remember what it is, but we have that number. And it's, it's up a little bit from last year, just by virtue of, you know, that levy limit is based on average growth in wages across the state, which we all have seen has been pretty significant. And that, but that's an average over the last five years. It's not just one year. And then the other piece is the growth in property, total taxable property valuation within the town. Those two growth rates combined is the growth factor and you take that and you apply it to what your limit was last year and that becomes your limit this year, basically.
It's gonna lead you to drink.
Yeah, so, once you get it though, it's just plugging in the numbers, you know.
And even plugging in those numbers, you know, we don't always know what those numbers are gonna be. It truly is a forecast.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's just, this is our, until you actually commit taxes like in July and you know all the variables, when we have the, what's the tax rate gonna be discussion, you don't know.
Changes every week.
Right, especially state revenue sharing, you know, that. So last year, last year, we estimated state revenue sharing at the time we did the budget of about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Year to date through November, it's over seven hundred thousand, so it's been good. You, it's a, it's a function of economic activity in the state. Now, next year, if we, you know, if we start to trend down in a recession or mild, whatever, you know, then state revenue sharing will, will trend back down, but so that's a, that's a wild card too.
And, you know, I want to say too, after working with a municipality that had a fiscal year July first to June thirtieth, I would encourage, I'm going to encourage the town of Durham to kind of take a bite of that apple and go from fiscal year July first to June thirtieth because it does line up better with all the other things that pertain to the budget. It limits your crystal ball work, really, a lot, quite a bit. So I would encourage people to, to look to do that. That would help out tremendously. And it, and it really gives us more time to put stuff together too and it's such a crunch, you know, we're, we're getting down to the last expenditures, trying to figure them out, get them in the budget and get going.
Right.
I mean, and, and when I was in Gardner, we got our budget probably late March and we were, you know, looking to have it passed in June. So we were like three months ahead and, but yeah, everybody's working on their budget at that point, so everybody's talking with, it just goes a little bit. Here, I kind of feel like an orphan left out in the, you know.
Yeah, we hear that from the auditors too. I asked the auditors when they were in last, I said, you know, how many, you know, what, what would you think the breakdown is of towns going on the calendar year versus the fiscal year? And she didn't give me a percentage, but she said, there's very few towns, you know, left on the calendar year, you know, because everything else is on the, state, schools, you know, everything's on fiscal.
Even some of our vendors, like the, like our solid waste, that goes from July first to June thirtieth too.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a lot of it happens that way.
One of, one of the changes as a result of that would, like, right now, we kind of have, our calendar is built so that we're not approving a budget until the previous budget year is closed, which means we're approving our budget, in our case, like three months into the, the year already.
Right.
And that's not normal. Normally, you're approving your budget before the next budget year actually starts. The flip side of that coin is you don't have your final actuals for everything when you're approving that budget. You have, you know, you have your projected based upon what you know is still outstanding and what's still coming, but that's the much more common, you know, methodology is doing that, but anyway. There'll be a lot of, I mean, that'll be a big change if, if the board decides along with Jerry to do that. It's not something that requires a town meeting vote or anything like that. It's really, it's, it's really up to us. But I think that's a pretty big change and want to be really careful how we manage and communicate that and get a lot of input from people beforehand in terms of, you know, what they see as the pros and cons and have that as an opportunity to, you know, inform people too about, you know, you know, why that's being recommended, so.
And explain that process as well.
What would do, what would that do to town meeting?
It would probably mean moving town meeting a little bit later, like into May or, or even early June. That's typically what you see. May and, May and June, when you start reading the papers in Maine, it's, it's like May and June is town meeting season, right? Because that's, that's, because they're approving their budgets in that timeframe and new budget starts July one. And then typically they commit taxes. Another piece of this would be to go to collecting taxes twice a year instead of once a year. So in smaller payments, obviously, they wouldn't be paying twice as much. So that, that definitely helps ease the transition to the, to the fiscal year because then you just start paying every six months, so.
And probably that's, that's probably gonna be a key part of it.
Yeah, because the.
Doing that first, right?
Well, it's all to get, so part of the transition is, there's two paths you can go. You can approve a, to get you onto that July start. You can do a six-month budget or you can do an eighteen-month budget. Jerry and I tell you, it's probably easier to do an eight-month budget. I'm sorry, yeah, eighteen month, not eight.
By the time you go through the budget process for six months, you're turning right around and doing it again.
Doing the whole thing again, right, so.
But, yeah.
But we're gonna have lots of discussions. We're not deciding anything tonight. Good heads up.
I'm gonna look and do a little bit more MMA. I'm gonna talk to other towns that have done that and see what kind of, you know, hurdles they had to jump.
Yeah, transition recommendations and, yeah.
It's just, just, I just want to plant the seed because I think it would be a great, I think, for the town to do.
For the record, he came to this all on his own. I did not put him up to this. I've been talking about fiscal year for a long time.
And, and to collecting taxes twice a year helps cash flow in here and helps manage it better and it's just, just for accountability, it's just a lot easier.
What, what do we have to do? I know you want to get away from this, but will we have to do more than just one six-month budget?
No, not if you went that road.
Just once and then.
But if you did a six-month budget, six months later, you're doing your next twelve-month budget, right, so.
It hurts at once.
It wouldn't even really be six months, it could be four months later to get ready for the next.
Well, that's true, right, that's true.
Yeah, you would hurt once.
Right.
But then you'd be on a yearly budget.
Yeah, 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 it's just.
Eighteen-month, you would collect them, you know, six months, twelve months, eighteen months and you'd be back on that cycle too.
Yeah, yeah.
But lots to discuss and lots to get through, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay, alright, so that was, any other discussions on the budget schedule? I mean, that's, that's how we got off on that little sidetrack, but.
Seems normal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, but. Change, as you know, is sometimes received well and sometimes not received well. Alright, Town Managers Report.
Okay, good. I get some, a few things for you here. So a week or so ago, we had some pre-K kids and kindergarten kids from the school march over here. See, see all the decorations on the tree? That was their doing. It was, it was pretty awesome. They all marched in here, you know, ten at a time and decorated the tree and that's probably something that we're gonna make a tradition and work with the school on. They were very happy. The teachers were thrilled that they could do that and.
I think you should tell the story of how that came, the whole idea came to be.
Yeah, actually, I don't really know.
Okay, well, I can tell.
Jessica, Jessica may know.
Jessica may have happened, so Jessica and the other office staff, so evidently, they were, they were looking for the ornaments for the tree and they couldn't find them. Right, so, so Jessica's idea, she called her buddy over at the school, because she's tight with people over at the school, and floated the idea of having kids make some ornaments for the tree. And that, it just snowballed from there and turned into this ornament parade of the little kids from the school and they came over and did that, so it was, it was like a really cool thing and it, it's, you know, so credit to the, the office staff for kind of coming up with that idea and making it happen. I think it got a lot of, uh.
It was really cool.
That's a great little, great little tradition to get going, so.
They were really happy about that. So the Christmas tree tags are all gone, so there was just a couple of families that filled out the applications and put them up, but they're all gone. And a few residents have come in and made some really nice donations to the, the Give and Tree Fund and some fuel assistance and so kudos for those Secret Santas. So all we gotta do with those donations is kind of go get some unwrapped presents and continue to do what we're, we're doing for the, for the kids in need, you know, that, what that for. And we're gonna work with Laco on some of the, some of the gifts with the school. We're gonna bring over to the, to the Laco on the twenty-second, I believe, Friday, Friday the twenty-second. Which is, will be nice. There's that. So a couple of weeks ago, I talked to you about workman's comp and how we got audited and we ended up paying sixteen thousand dollars because they tacked on twenty percent to our wages. Well, since I've given them the data, they just sent a check to us for thirty-one thousand seventy-five, so.
Nice work.
We're caught up now and we're, we're okay, so.
Alright.
That, that was good news today. I just found that out, so we should get that.
So does that impact the figure that you're gonna have to put in for the budget next year?
No, that's, that's the same and it's because our mod rate is just through the roof, so we're working on that and you sign the incentives and that sort of stuff, so. You know, where it's on a year basis, so hopefully next year, we'll see a little difference. And once some of these claims get off our, because they're on for three years, once those go and we, we do better at returning people to work and that sort of, we should see reductions in the workman's comp, but, but that, that was a.
So, so it just initially was that it looked like we owed them fifteen, sixteen thousand and then, once you got all the paperwork, it really was the other way.
Right.
They owed us fifteen, so they gave us back our fifteen plus another fifteen and then next year, you say it'll be like an even budget?
Well, workman's comp.
Does it go?
So workman's comp is workman's comp, so whatever, so we give them codes for our employees. So, and they give us a mod rate based on all of that and they look for that data to, so they can plug it into the system and let us know. They never got the data last year. That's why they jacked up the.
Interesting.
The wages, twenty percent, and that's what really, and that really drives it a lot. And that's why they said, well, we're gonna go twenty percent on their wages and that's where the sixteen thousand came in. And our wages were inflated to begin with. So, so when they came in this time and I gave them the right information and plugged it all in, they were really good. They didn't really have to do what they did to reimburse us, but they're a nonprofit and they recognized that Durham was going through some changes and things got lost and they were willing to work with us and do that for us. So that, it worked out really good. So there's that. Now that we have the right data moving forward, we'll just keep, we'll just keep our eye on it and keep giving them the data when they ask. Every year, they, it's the same old thing, you know, they want data next year. It's almost like, you know, wash, rinse and repeat. As long as you have it and give it to them, they're our insurer, work with them, they're a good, good organization. So because of the, and I should anyway, just, I'm just letting you know, I did take the test to get my notary. So when we have these little things like this, I'll be here to hopefully, so the checks in, just waiting for the state now to go through what they do.
Oh, you don't have it actually yet?
I don't have it right now.
I was saying, why didn't we just do that earlier?
I don't have it yet. It's going through the process. So just so you let me know, I have, I have done that. And the last thing I have is that Wednesday, the twenty-first, starting at one o'clock, we're having a little Christmas gathering over at the fire station and, you know, more than one to come join the staff for a little Christmas cheer before the holiday. There'll be some food and they're doing a little gift swap and so you're more than welcome. You're, you're all invited and hopefully you can stop by and say ho, ho, ho and Merry Christmas and.
Great, so the one condition there is that if we show up.
No fireball.
No fireball, okay, that would be a second condition. But the first, we can't talk business. We can't talk town business because it's, especially if there's three or more of us there and we're talking business, then that's supposed to be a noticed meeting, so only talk Christmas cheer, kids, grandkids, you know, you can talk about Joe if you want, you know. But, alright, so, but yeah, Jerry, thanks for that heads up.
Other than that, things are going really well. I'm, I'm happy with what the staff's getting accomplished and things are, things are, things are good.
Great. Yeah, I, I would just add, you know, I've, I, I think some of you have too, but I've been coming in on a, on a fairly regular basis to spend time with Jerry and the work he's done just diving into stuff like trying to figure out the accounts and figure out the, you know, like the reserve accounts and the bank accounts. You know, we have like, I don't know, like eight or ten bank accounts that weren't labeled anywhere on what they were for, you know, so he spent a lot of time with our banking representative figuring that out and he's, he's got the auditors coming in to help explain stuff, you know, like figure out where we are. And also, not just figure out what, what was wrong, but learn about best practices so that we do things better in the future and we don't get into these things. So real, kudos to you for your diligence and the way you've, you know, dove right in and you are, you are, I used, I told you this the other day, you are like a dog with a bone, man. You are like not letting anything go and you're figuring it out, so.
So that, I am bringing the auditor in on the twenty-seventh. That's gonna be a fairly, fairly big meeting. I apologize for it being right after the holidays. We're all coming in because Christmas is on Sunday. We have Monday off and then it's Tuesday, so, but yeah, I'm bringing, I'm bringing the auditors and I am gonna invite the Budget Committee to be here. I think they, it's important that they see what, you know, what the status of our.
Yep.
Of our finances are. So we do that and I, we're looking good.
Do we want to look at an alternative location for that meeting if we might have the Budget Committee here too?
We could. Do you wanna?
I don't know, something to think of. You can think about it, what you think.
Huh?
Green Chel.
Yeah, yeah, also known as the Eureka Center for those people that have been in town less than forty years.
He had me stuck there. He just remembers that from nineteen sixty-eight, I think.
Yeah.
So yeah, we can do that. With the fire. So yeah, we can do that. Would the fire station be alright? That, we worked this-
I, I think that's a great-
I thought that was a great spot.
I think that's a, that's a great spot if it's a-
Well, that was easiest to set up.
Yeah. Thing is, the keyboard is in behind. I don't know if it's, I know the mouse works fine, but the keyboard is in behind, behind a closet. I'll check with Chief to see if-
Yeah, whatever works. And it just, if, if we don't need to and we can come here, that's fine too, we just-
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's fine. And, and you did a great job at the CIP the other night.
Well, good. Hopefully I wasn't too confusing in the questions I was asking, cause-
No, that was spot on, it's good. It's the first time through the process and, and, you know, we're still sometimes learning ourselves along the way. So it's, it's, it, it, that went very well.
Yeah, thank you.
Data was there, was um, uh, you know, and all that, you know, the way that you put the budget uh, items together for us to, to look at was, was easy.
Clarity is good and it's really just about communication, make sure we're on the same page. It's just like this budget, it's no big deal, but I just wanna make sure that we talked about it and where we're at and the time constraint, cause it, it's pretty tight.
Yeah.
You know, but we'll get it.
Yep.
You wait.
We don't have a choice. We have to.
There's no leeway.
The only other thing that I have is, that I wanna talk to you about, and it can be a separate agenda item, is the copier. So that lease is now up. So to get rid of it, it's an intent to, to get out of the lease. That particular lease is market value buyback, so we don't really wanna buy it. Um, I have a couple quotes to, to get another one. In the way the policy has always worked, that ten thousand under always went to the select board. Do you still wanna, do you still want that? Do you wanna give it to the town manager? How do we wanna proceed with?
I think, I think until we amend the policy, we need to follow whatever the policy says.
Right, okay.
And if we wanna amend the policy, then that would be a separate deal where you could bring to us suggested recommendations for, you know, changing that policy, but that would take two or three meetings, cause you'd wanna, you know, uh, propose, you know, propose it so we could discuss it. Um, uh, and then not vote on it that meeting, you'd vote on it the next meeting to, um, so I think we gotta follow it the way it is.
Yep, okay, that's fine. We just, there's one out, there's a printer out there that's in good shape that I think would work for us. It's kind of a, it's a refurbished one, but it's only fifty-five hundred bucks. And um, we purchased it outright. Then our lease, what we're paying right now, um, basically, I don't, I don't have the numbers. I'll have to uh, come back to you. Like, we're paying like three hundred and fifty-seven a month right now for the printer.
Printer?
Yeah, for the lease and, and the service contract. We buy it outright, that three hundred and fifty-seven goes down to fifty a month. So it's, it's those sort of things.
Service contract?
Yeah, cause we bought in the printer, so instead of-
Sounds like a no-brainer to me.
It is, but I'll go over, I'll put it all in better format and it'll be part of your package, so you can see it.
Yeah, okay.
So this printer here, you don't, you don't want?
No, well, the lease is up, so we're paying really more than we really should for it right now.
Yeah, I think much like the scanner, you know, a one pager on, this is the current state, this is what we're paying. This is what I'm proposing and why, and this would be the cost difference and whatever, just you could, you know, anticipate the questions that people will ask and have the answer there on the sheet, so.
Okay, that's all I got.
Alright, uh, consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. I'll second.
So is, well, is the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, thanks.
Get ahead of it.
Alright, alright, all in favor? Uh, upcoming meetings, uh, select board, our next meeting is the twenty-seventh, uh, and then again, January tenth, um, those are both the town hall.
January- Sorry.
For a regular meeting.
Oh, the budget presentation is gonna be separate at the Eureka Center on the tenth? That's what, that's what this says?
Yeah, that, I, I think that hasn't actually been scheduled yet. That's the tentative date would be the tenth. We usually, as, I think what we did last year is that we did a really quick, like thirty-minute meeting over here um, to do like, do the warrant and anything like that needed to be done and addressed by the board. And then we went over to Eureka Center, uh, starting at like six-thirty and did the budget presentation meeting over there.
Okay.
So I'm pretty sure if, if memory serves, that's what we did. Um, so I think, have you confirmed the budget presentation dates with the budget committee?
I haven't. That's, that's what we're gonna do on the nineteenth.
Okay, so let's not announce those until we actually have confirmation from them that those are the dates, cause they might, they might change a little bit.
Yeah, part of the, part of this meeting with the budget committee is to set those schedules to what, what, what they're looking.
Okay. Um, so, so that's the twelve nineteen meeting with the budget committee, the kind of a, kind of a pre-planning meeting.
Right, right.
And then capital improvement meeting, as you mentioned earlier, uh, on the twentieth at six-thirty also here, uh, at the town hall.
Actually, so that's a typo at six o'clock.
Oh, six o'clock on the CIP?
CIP, yep.
Okay. Alright, and I'm assuming we don't need executive session tonight?
No, we're good.
Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Josh, seconded by Joe, all in favor? We are adjourned.